Gather our thoughts, but also to show gratitude for a school year that we're thankful for the teachers that worked hard, the students that worked hard, and the things that went on this year. We're thankful for all of their hard work, and so we want to take a few minutes and show our gratitude for that also. So join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. I want to acknowledge Kami and Rodney and all of the ones that I'm sure had a big hand in the reception this morning. So thank you for that. And I know Dr. Hill and I and Ms. Song, we all enjoyed it, and you made us feel very special. So thank you for all that y'all did. And I know you probably had a team working with you, but thank you for all of that. It was very much appreciated. So thank you. All right. We have some recognitions this morning. Milken Award winner Emily Howard. Ms. Saraceni.
This is always exciting when we get to celebrate teachers. And I know some of you had the opportunity to go to the Milken Award ceremony held in Drew Central Monticello District. Emily Howard creates a vibrant class from community where students feel confidence, they're engaged, and love learning. She's a third grade teacher at Drew Central in Monticello. She has a varied teaching experience. She loves her third grade. She is one of those lead teachers already for N I E T. She's that master of lead design and teacher. We want to mentor our new teachers, and she does that. So this is just an exemplary person, and we're going to celebrate her today because we have the Milken Foundation. Please finally hand me in, because I know this is hard. But just to give you a little bit about the Milken family foundation is founded by Will and Michael Milken in 1982. And they really strive to provide recognition for teachers of excellence. And so this is so exciting that I get to announce that we celebrated Emily Howard of Drew Central Elementary. So we will leave.
So I'm sure she would like to say something.
I did prepare just a little something because I'm very nervous. I type it on my phone, so I'll excuse me so I can, I can read it to you. Because I didn't want this moment to go without just saying thank you. And from the moment that I got this award, I was absolutely excited. To be noticed, appreciated, and honored with an award like this just seems to be a great dream. But the truth is, I have been working really hard in my classroom through the past seven years. I work hard to make my kids well safe. And I've worked to ensure that they know the things that they need to know. And I want them to feel valued and loved. And I've worked so hard for them to get those aha moments that teachers just love to have. And so I've done all of that with an amazing village behind me. My incredible husband and my family and the amazing coworkers that I have behind me, all of those people have helped me be where I am. But the truth is, is that there are hundreds of teachers across this amazing state and various districts and counties that have worked just as hard. And so I'm proud to represent them. I am proud to be a part of this incredible Milken family. And I pray that I get to use this moment as momentum for our students in Arkansas and continue to impact the students in Arkansas because I truly do this effort. So I want to say thank you to my amazing husband and my supportive family and the district, Drew Central School District.
The Drew Central School District, because they have. They raised me, they invested in me, and they have helped me become who I am. So thankful to my Lord and Savior and to my family. And I just want to say again, thank you so much for honoring me today. The breakfast was wonderful.
A pictures, please. And also, I'd like for past Milken Award winners to stand up because we have several.
Yes.
And I appreciate them for coming and supporting.
Oh, that would be great. That would be awesome.
Well, congratulations, and we appreciate our Milken winners. I'm sure they are going to all, not just our current winner, Ms. Howard, but all of them have so much to contribute during the time that we're transitioning and developing rules and their expertise. I'm sure will be a valuable asset to the department and those that are here. And so we're moving to our favorite part of the day to have some student recognition. So this is something that we look forward to each month. We're going to recognize Stagecoach Elementary Robotics Team and Ms. Song.
Good morning, State Board. I am excited to be here to help present these students to you. Most of you have seen them multiple times through my Teacher of the Year presentations, and so I am so excited that we actually get to honor them in person today. This is the Stagecoach Robotics All-Girls Robotics Team, and they started as an after-school club with volunteer teachers, spending time after school, a lot of time after school, building this robot, learning how to code it. They qualified at a regional tournament, their only tournament that they went to, and made it to state, and then they won the Design Award at state and made it to Worlds in Dallas. There was almost 800 teams, is that correct? There was four teams from Arkansas, but this group just did incredible. And I would love for them to speak for themselves and tell you a little bit about their experience and what they gained from this, because it's pretty remarkable to hear. So, girls, do you want to come up? And a few of you have opportunity to speak?
Hi, I'm Magnolia Song.
Hi, I'm Lilly Perkins.
Hi, I'm Blaine Tierney.
I'm Aleah White.
Hi, I'm Inslee Wood.
I'm so excited that we have this opportunity. We are a league of its own from Stagecoach Elementary in Cabot.
We went to a Worlds competition and got to compete in drive robots with people from Australia, Japan, and China.
We couldn't have made it to Worlds without the support of all the teachers and all of our friends at Stagecoach Elementary.
I think we're mostly proud that we even made it to a competition from regionals to state to Worlds from the Design Award.
We also can't thank Dr. Thurman enough for all he's done with us.
I think I got a lot more confidence when I entered robotics. It helped me more with my math skills because my confidence didn't just leave that robotics room. It followed me to the classroom, and I didn't think of myself good as math, but I actually got better at math because I believed in myself.
I did want to recognize their sponsors and their teachers. We have Ms. House, Ms. Cooper. Ms. Kurt Wright is not here today, and then Ms. Skiva is the principal at Stagecoach, and we have Dr. Thurman, the superintendent from Cabot. And I know they won't be here when I do my board report at the end, so I'm going to take one quick minute to thank my district for their support. There's not many Teachers of the Year, I think, that have had the amount of support I've had from Cabot, and it has allowed me to take full advantage of this year and to know that I'm going back to the best school district in Arkansas. So I just want to take a minute to thank them, and I would love if we could have a picture with the State Board members and our robotics team, because they are applying for, could you tell me the name of the program? The STEM Model School for the State of Arkansas. And so we are excited to bring these opportunities to more students in the district and in the school. So, girls, you want to come up for a picture?
I do have one more thing I want to say. We had another team, we had another team in our school, and they were, we split it up, girls and boys, and we learned a lot from having two teams, because they actually had a better robot than us, but we had a better notebook. So they were really good though, so we wanted to thank them too.
I forgot that part. All right. Ms. Song, while you're there, I see that we have a guest of honor, a celebrity in our midst. Would you bring her up and reintroduce her to us, please?
I would love to. We have the 2023 Arkansas Teacher of the Year, Capri Bel Salom, here. And so I'm so glad she's able to be here. For my last meeting, her first meeting will be next month. She is going to do incredible things. It has been wonderful to get to know her, to see her in her classroom, to just talk to her as a friend and a toy sister, and to know that she is going to continue the amazing work for our state and be an incredible advocate and voice for teachers and students and just for the state of Arkansas. So I'm going to give her a minute to speak, and we are so glad you're here.
Thank you.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
So I have the distinct honor and pleasure of being the 2023 Arkansas Teacher of the Year, and July 1, I begin my year of service. And I'm so excited to just absorb all of the great things that are happening in classrooms all across Arkansas, because we know those things are happening. And so I'm excited to just jump into it and really be an advocate and a voice for our teachers, our students, and just our community in general, because Arkansas is such a great place.
And I've said to her, right when we found out she won, I hope that I can prepare you. There's things that Susannah didn't tell me. There's things I wish I'd known. And now I know that Susannah prepared me as best she could. There is no way to truly prepare for this amazing journey and for all that you will experience and the growth that you will have. But I cannot wait to see what you do and how you continue to change the world and change education and improve the outcomes for all students in our state. And she's going to do that. So we're excited to have her here today.
Yes, yes. We wish you the best, and I know you're going to do outstanding things, and so we appreciate your service.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm happy to be here today.
I guess, is Kevin still here? Can you get another picture before they leave? There he is. I see. We'll get a picture with Ms. Song and Capri.
I guess with you.
Sure. One more time. Yeah, there we go. Okay, there we go. How do you like to see it?
Congratulations.
One more time. Thank you. Transition now. Not yet. I do want to acknowledge a couple more people that are in our midst this morning. My husband is here today observing, and so y'all be good. Don't let him in on all of our secrets. But I appreciate him being here and the support that he's given me these last eight years has been tremendous, and it's very, he's been my rock. I appreciate it. And Ms. Hook, former State Board member, sat up here with us and led us through some, I'll say, challenging times and decisions and was a great example and mentor to me. And so I appreciate her for being here today, too. So I think that's all of our recognitions, so we will move on now to our agenda. We do have a couple of changes to the agenda. There is one item that we want to pull. It is item 5D, 51D, the recommendation for probation status for Cutter Morningstar. We're going to pull that and address it at a later date. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Then we will move on to our action agenda. The first item on our action agenda are recommendations of final accredited status for the districts listed. Dr. Sutherland.
So Matthew Sutherland, Standards and System Support. The first list that you have is the list of fully accredited or recommendations for fully accredited schools. This means these schools have no exceptions in SFA, so no standards have been violated.
Is there any discussion on these districts? If not, I need a motion for approval. Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Hunter to approve. Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Wood. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. The next list is actually the recommendation for accredited cited status. So these are both, well, they are the citations that you issued in March, plus any new citations.
So it did include those that we voted on previously. Any discussion on these, Dr. Moore?
Just a little background about how this process works. This is an annual, I mean, accreditation occurs every year.
Yes.
And so these are sightings just for?
For this year, but the status will go with them until next year.
Are any of these on the list ones that have been cited in previous years?
Not since I've been here, so.
There are no consecutive citations?
Correct.
Because if they're consecutive, then they move up a level. Is it to probation?
And can I ask?
Sure.
A lot of them were for 1C1?
That's the testing citation. So that's the not testing 95% from March.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is, we already?
You've already voted on it, but this is kind of like the final.
Did we grant them a waiver at that point, or what did we vote on?
No, so.
We voted that they would be cited, and so this is the final step of their citing.
Any other discussion on these? Okay, then I'm ready for a motion to approve the citations. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Rollins. Seconded by Dr. Hill. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, the next is a recommendation for accredited cited status for Lincoln School District, and it's for Lincoln Middle School for Standard 4D1 teacher licensure. The consideration is for an appeal of the accredited cited status for Lincoln School District. The district employed a teacher without a license for the 2022-2023 school year.
Good morning. Shastity Wagner at Legal. I have to give you guys the procedure, since this is an appeal. So we have procedures that we have to walk through. So, give me just a second. All right. So first thing that will happen is the chair will swear in anybody who is going to testify, and then the division will have up to 20 minutes to present its case to you. Of course, the chair can allow additional time if needed. The appealing district, which in this case is the Lincoln School District, shall have 20 minutes to present its case. If it needs more than 20 minutes, the chair, you can decide to grant more than that. After that time, then you can pose any questions to either side, and then you will make your decision at that point. Okay? And if there's any questions, I'll be here.
Thank you.
So there should be someone from Lincoln on the Zoom.
Do we have someone from Lincoln on the Zoom?
Yes, I'm here. Mary Ann Spears.
Ms. Spears, is that what I heard?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Spears, welcome. We will start this morning by swearing in anyone that is going to give testimony today that is not an attorney. Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll begin with the division.
So let me just preface this by saying that our specialists work to keep schools accredited every day of the school year. So it shouldn't be an issue where they're carrying exceptions for long periods of time. So there's copious amounts of communication with the districts throughout the school year. Yeah, okay, it's working now. All right. So what you're looking at here is our SFA system. So this is our Standards for Accreditation System. It shows the districts their accreditation status at that moment, and this is the current status for Lincoln School District. So you can see it gives them information for their standard specialist. It gives them reports each month. It gives them all their waivers that they have, document management, which includes the statement of assurance. It gives them all their schools and their accreditation status, as well as their trend each month. So the standard that we're talking about is Standard 4D1. 4D1 says each public school district shall employ classroom teachers that meet the licensure requirements in accordance with the laws of the state of Arkansas and the rules of the division, or are under an approved waiver in accordance with the laws of the state of Arkansas and the rules of the division. So what we're looking at here is they do either have to have a license or they have to have some form of waiver or licensure exception. So that could be a long-term sub, but that would need to be granted at the first of the school year. All right. So districts have access to their status 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So they can, they get reports on the 21st of every month. These are snapshots of each of their reports that they received. And if you notice where I've got that arrow pointing, that's actually Standard 4. So that's 4D1 that they were flagging for all year long. All right. And then here's our reports. So these are the reports that get sent out to the district on the 21st of each month. So when we look at those reports, you can see this is the example of their most recent report, which was in April. So you can see up the top, the district gets notified that they are cited. So they already know when they get that report that they need to do something. But beyond that, what we have here is our timeline of communication. So I'm just going to go over the highlighted ones, and what I'm going to do, too, is I have a more thorough description here.
If you just want to give them just, we'll pass them down.
So what you'll see here is that it has, on 8/29, this standard specialist actually reached out to the district with all expiring licensure exceptions. So they printed out from LEA Insights all of the expiring exceptions and sent that to the district. Then on 12/6/2022, the specialist received an email stating that the teacher would graduate with her MAT on Friday, December 9, 2023. So we were trying to work with the district to make sure that she was getting her license, she was working through her program. And then on February 3, the licensure unit coordinator responded to an email sent by the specialist to the licensure coordinator that they had not received anything from that teacher for this school year. Now, you'll also notice at the bottom, there's communication on 9/21 and 10/21, 11/21, 12/21, 1/21, and then 2/21. Those are all the reports that they receive each month. Now, on February 24, it shouldn't say 24, I don't know how the 4 got there, but anyway, the district stated that the teacher had received the university transcript, and it was uploaded to Ailes. It was stated that she was set up for fingerprinting on March 2. Then on 3/6/2023, the district emailed stating licensure was still waiting on the teacher's transcript. So we had a transcript that they had, but then it's not there anymore. So then on March 13, the district, sorry, the Director of Licenceur responded that the teacher had not applied for her license as of March 13. Then on March 13, I actually called the superintendent and let her know that the license had not been applied for. She said she would take care of that. And then on March 1, sorry, May 1, SFA closed, and the teacher got her provisional license, which then turned into a standard license. And then the specialist notified them that they still had an exception for social studies because the teacher's license was not in social studies. And then on the 3rd, we actually sent them a hearing letter. So this is just a summary of the outreach. So we have our monthly reports on the 21st. We have 20 We have twenty-six emails directly to the district from the standard specialist. We have emails from the standard specialist to licensure regarding the exception to aid the district in clearing up the exception. And then phone calls to the district by the standard specialist. And then phone calls and emails to the superintendent by the coordinator of Standards and System Support. And that's it.
All right. I I have one question for you. Sit down, Doc, uh, Mr. Sutherland.
Yes.
Is, uh, at, all during this time that they they were getting these emails and in contact from the division, were there things that the district could have done at tho- at those individual points to have removed them from the citation?
So they could have requested a twelve forty waiver, or they could have requested a long-term sub.
Okay.
And so, yes. And 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 just to kind of give you a little more background knowledge, the teacher had an ETP for the prior two years, and then they requested another ETP, but you can't receive an ETP for the third year, which is an emergency teaching permit.
Okay, all right, so that was only good for two years, but there were other options for the district to pursue, but they chose not to?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Ms. Spear?
Yes, yes, so the teacher in question should have really been finished last summer, but she had a baby in the middle of the summer with some complications. So she had to defer and take a class in the fall. She should have graduated in December, but her University of Monticello advisor failed to get her paperwork in or something to that effect. So she actually didn't actually graduate till May. We we were kind of on hopes. I mean, we felt like this was going to clear before that March end thing with her. So we didn't apply for the emergency permit or any other, you know, she was in a non-traditional, she was working on her MAT. She's an excellent teacher, she'd been with us two years already. Just some life circumstances kind of got in the way, and, um, you know, no fault of ours. We don't really feel like we could have done anything any different, just working through with her. And we we really felt that this was all gonna clear. She got her transcript, she had finished the coursework. There was just a hiccup with the advisor at the University of Monticello. So we're just asking for a little grace here and to not be cited. We've never been cited before. Just just appreciate you working with us on this. Thank you.
We'll see if we have any questions from from the board. Anyone over here have a question for Division or Ms. Spear?
So at what point could they have applied for a twelve forty waiver?
At any point during the school year.
Okay, so even back in, they thought she was gonna graduate in the summer, she didn't. They could have applied August, September, all the way through.
Correct.
Any other questions over here? Over here, Dr. Moore?
For the district, is there a reasoning why y'all didn't apply for that act twelve forty waiver?
We we weren't advised about a twelve forty waiver at that point.
You just thought because she would get her degree in the year that would cover?
And she had her tran- we had her transcript, she'd applied for licensure, yes.
I did notice, and this might be because of the process, but it says not until February, when her transcript was uploaded, she had a background check and fingerprinting. I'm assuming that wouldn't be the first, like, you have to have a background check before?
Yeah, she had, she had done that already when she became employed with us, but that was a new regulation because she was applying for a standard license, yes. So she had to go through that process again, and she did.
And so then, what what subject was she teaching?
She was teaching literacy and some social studies.
Okay, and so social studies is the one that she went certified for? Okay.
Fourth grade.
Now, back to the agency, Dr. Sutherland. What is the consequences for receiving a citation?
So a citation is just a warning. So essentially, they would have to be cited two years in a row to then be put on or recommended for probationary status.
Okay, and if, so that sort of happened again?
Correct.
It would come back in front of the board, is that correct?
Correct. And at that time, they could be recommended for probation status. Yeah.
Does this district have any act twelve forty waivers for any other teachers or anything else?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
We do have some act twelve forty waivers for our high school.
Okay, for for teacher licensure?
But not even, but not middle school.
Are those for teacher licensure or for other issues?
Yes, there there is some, yes.
So you do have some teachers employed under waivers?
Not, not at this time, not anymore. We have in the past, but not, not anymore. Everyone else is is fully certified. Everything's good.
Okay, and I guess, so this teacher now, she has, she received everything? Will she be able to teach this upcoming school year?
Yeah, yes, she she will, and she took a praxis and all that. She will, but she's moving to a different district, but she she should be well. She should be certified for her new district, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're kind of caught here, and she's leaving us, but it's fine. Husband's a coach, got a, got a coaching job in his hometown. You can't, you can't fault that. We're, we're happy for their family.
Any other questions over here? Ms. Rollins?
Ms. Spears, I'm, I'm concerned that all this communication went on between ADE and your district, and I'm, I'm just wondering how all of this got missed. This took a lot, this took a lot of time.
I'm sorry, Kathy, Kathy, I can't hear you.
Can you pull your microphone, Ms. Rollins?
Sorry?
There we go, I'll get it closer to you, there you go.
No, I'm, I'm just surprised at how much communication went on between ADE and your district, and I'm wondering how all of this got missed. I mean, this took a lot of time from the department to to try and correct this situation.
There was great communication with the department. We, I mean, we were just kind of at the mercy of of that higher ed institution, the University of Arkansas Monticello, to finishing up their their end of what what she needed to get totally certified. So, I mean, that, we, we were kind of hampered. We didn't really have any other options.
Can you tell us, uh, I guess I I didn't know what higher ed needed to do for her? Can you explain?
They, they should have filed, she should have graduated in December, and her, somehow, her per, her advisor did not file the proper paperwork and get her graduate. So we, it, this would have all been taken care of and been wrapped up by, you know, our end of January had had they done what they needed to do.
So they, they wouldn't normally communicate with the superintendent and the district on this?
No, like, no, they, they were just communicating with her.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I have a question for Dr. Sutherland. So in all this communication, were all, were options to remediate laid out?
Yes, and in fact, I I just got a text from one of my specialists that was communicating with them that on eleven sixteen, there was a recommendation of a twelve forty waiver.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wood, did you have a question?
I don't think so.
Okay. My question has to do with, even after she got her degree, she still does not have a certificate in social studies. She's not certified to teach that. Were you aware that that would still be an issue? Ms. Spear?
Yes, uh, we, yes, we, um, we did, we put her in as a long-term sub at that point when they realized that was gonna be an issue, that she was only gonna get the English certification. She was understanding she would be able to get both through that process, so.
Dr. Sutherland, when, did they apply for a long-term sub?
They did apply for long-term sub, but it was after the the accreditation window had closed.
Okay, all right, okay, so they had opportunities all along, but then chose not to. Okay. Any other discussions, Mr. Henderson?
Yeah, I have one in regards to the ETP. Noticed that for two years, they were granted that, and the third, the third request was denied. Can you elaborate on that a little bit for me, please?
Well, generally, ETPs are emergency teaching permits, and they're normally one year, but they can be extended to two years, but they don't go to three years.
And that's, is that in statute, or is that our rule? Ms. Saracini?
Carly Saracini, Educator Effectiveness and Licensure. It's in our rules that it's a emergency teacher, teaching permit for one year. With exception, it can be two, but it has to be worked out between the district and the department working with you to make sure they're on a path. And then we never grant them after two. It's only for emergency for that second year.
Any other discussion from the board? Okay, we are ready for a motion on the recommendation. Dr. Sutherland, let me make sure I understand this. What what is the department's recommendation?
It's a recommendation of citation.
Okay, so the department is recommending cited?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we need a motion on recommendations for accredited cited status for the Lincoln School District?
I'll motion for that.
To approve? To approve, okay, we have a motion?
Ms. Student?
Yes.
I'm sorry, we need two motions.
Okay.
First motion needs to be on whether to uphold the appeal or deny the appeal. And then the second motion needs to be whether or not to accept the division's recommendation for the accredited cited status.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so our first motion does need to be to either uphold the appeal by the Lincoln School District or to deny the appeal by the Lincoln School District.
I'll move to deny, because I understand us.
Okay, well, Ms. Woods is moving to deny the appeal of the Lincoln School District. Do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Hunter. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now we need a, a motion on their accredited accreditation status?
Whatever the move to accept the department's recommendation.
Okay, the, the, the recommendation is to, uh, have cited status for the Lincoln School District, Lincoln Middle School for teacher licensure?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have that motion by Ms. Woods?
Yes, sir.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Sutton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Spear, for for being here, and I'm sure that you, you and the the district will have this taken care of in the near future.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
All right. All right, the next item was removed from our agenda, so we're moving on to the consent agenda. And we're gonna take up kind of a discussion that we had last month on long-term subs and relationships to ALE. And we asked the department to do some research and then to get back with us on that issues, issue. So Ms. Saracini?
Carly Saracini, Assistant Commissioner. So in your packet this time, I know it's very small, but we went ahead and put all the percents for the long-term subs as Mr. Wood asked for last month. Also, I just kind of want to give some background. As we were researching this, we had to own it that, um, we did not have procedures or protocol in place, and so some things have maybe slipped through the cracks. And those ALE, long-term subs, should have never gotten up to this point. So we have been busily working to put in standard operating procedures so this would not happen again. And so this time, when you see the long-term sub list, we literally, if it said, um, there's a drop-down when they fill it out, when the district fills out the form, and again, it's always self-reported. And then we have to come back and confirm. It will say, teacher resigned, teacher, um, no teacher of record. So now we have gone as far as if it says no teacher of record, they're gonna have to explain to us why no teacher of record. And so if you look, uh, this month, we had three, uh, no teacher of records, but it says created new classrooms now because we have changed it. Pulaski County had asked for three long-term subs with no teacher of record. It now sparked us to look into it. We spoke with Deb Kaufman's team, Dr. Sutherland, and said, okay, they're asking for long-term subs, they've not had teachers in there all year. Come to find out, they went over their teaching load of a hundred and fifty students, so they had to create new classrooms. So we are now digging into each individual, um, waiver exception that comes to us. And so we're really putting in procedures to make sure our students have qualified people in front of them. And as you see, those long-term subs are not back on this month for ALE. I know next month, uh, there'll be deep discussion and a report about specifically ALE.
So you are still working on the ALE issue, and you're gonna bring that specific information back?
I will not specifically bring it, but Matt Sewell and his team will bring it back, who's over ALE. And so we, you will not see, we're not granting the long-term subs for ALE from my office.
Okay, so those have essentially been denied, I guess?
They have.
Okay, all right. Did you have something you wanted to add to that?
If you're asking what constitutes a long-term sub, this may be helpful. Our, we look at, you must hold a bachelor's degree and you must have a current background check. And so those things are, we look at. And so when we were, uh, looking at those ALEs two months ago, first of May, um, we denied some because they did not have background checks, current background checks, and bachelor's degrees. So we do have things in place, just not enough, but we are getting them in now.
Okay, all right. Is there, uh, are there some questions for Ms. Saracini?
I was just gonna ask, has anybody communicated with Ms. Allenbaugh, who actually brought all of this to our attention?
I haven't, but I'm sure that we can talk about it, and, uh, we can, I'm sure we'll work on that. And also, Mr. Wood made me start thinking about what we give to you for the waivers. Would you li- like it if we put in there the waivers that looks at current waivers compared to last year number waivers so that each month you could kind of see where we were this year compared to last year? We do keep up with that, and that can be part as well. You've made us look at a lot of different options, so it's a good thing. It's a learning experience for us, and we want to do better about communicating that. And, you know, we're all here for the kids, and we want the most highly effective teachers in front of our students because that's what makes the most difference on student outcomes, and that's why we're here.
Absolutely. Dr. Moore, did you have a question?
Yeah, so when I'm looking at the document that you provide us with the percentage of teachers on ALEs, at the end of the document, there's a long list of a lot of entities that aren't like a typical school district.
Yes.
Are those all entities that are required to employ teachers?
Yes, so maybe like a DHS facility?
Right.
Mm-hmm, there are.
And then some are co-ops and are?
Correct.
These other co-ops, are they all for ALE, or might they be for other programs?
It could be, uh, a lot of your co-ops have your early childhood, your ABC programs, so it could be that as well.
I didn't know if this, looking into what's going on at Archford triggered, looking into all the other ALEs at co-ops to see what they're doing for their teachers?
We are putting procedures in place so that it doesn't occur again. We're looking into everything. That's why you see that long list at the bottom of different entities. We want to make sure you see everything and we're transparent.
Do we know how long they had been employing the long-term subs at Archford and at other co-ops? Like, is that, has this been a long-term practice, or was it a short-term gap, or do we?
That is something that they are going to take up with you next month and go into detail.
Okay. Dr. Pfeffer, did you have something you wanted to add?
The only thing I would add is the, the long-term subs for the ALE was different this year, and it was, um, in in a large part because of a rule change that took place with the ALE rules. That rule change didn't go into effect until the school year had actually started this past year. So it was in late in the fall, so there were more staff required, um, for ALE programs. Unfortunately, the way all that happened, it resulted in, uh, not having licensed teachers with students. And so that is a lot of what, um, next month, the people who are closer to the, working with the ALE program will be able to detail out for all of you. So this was an anomaly this year with long-term subs with the ALE, and to that degree, for sure.
Any other questions on that item? Thank you, Ms. Saracini. Okay.
Just a couple of things.
Okay.
This chart is really very good and actually gives us pretty good perspective and might even paint a better picture of the classroom than when you hear lots of anecdotal examples. This shows that really, I mean, almost, almost every school district is below one percent as far as long-term subs go. And, I mean, so many, many school districts are less than five percent of alternative licensing plans. So it's actually very positive. I think the chart demonstrates that. I would love to see maybe a state average number so we can, uh, we can have something to compare every individual school district to. And then maybe even at the bottom, a grand total that shows. And then maybe even at the bottom, a grand total that shows total number of ALPs in Arkansas and what percentage in Arkansas, all of that, just so that, you know, as we look at the statewide picture, what, what we have to look at. But other than that, I really appreciate this information.
I've kinda done that. That's why I asked if you wanted that, because then and compare it to where we are now from last year. So, our ALPs this year for twenty-two, twenty-three were one thousand four hundred and three. Last year at this time, it was one thousand one hundred and thirty-nine. So, I can start putting that on there and next month, I'll round out and do that for you. Long-term subs this year, and long-term subs are granted by semester, so it's really double. So when you think one thousand one hundred and twelve, it's a lot, but then you cut that in half and so it, it, it isn't as many.
Sure.
It's, it's just doubled. And at this time last year, it was one thousand fourteen. So I mean, it's pretty, we're holding, it's a, it's not jumping tremendous, but I'll have that. That's why I asked you if you wanted that. So you made us start looking at our data and that's what we wanna do, to do a better job. And it does portray that we do not have as many unlicensed staff as you would think.
Ms. Saracini, is there any way to, to take that data and also include for districts or even looking at it statewide, twelve-forties and put those in there? Because I mean, when you start talking about unlicensed teachers, we have to think about twelve-forties also.
Twelve-forties, we do not monitor that through my office, but I'm sure Ms. Kaufman and I can work together to get that number.
I, I think that, that would be helpful if you're trying to look statewide at, at numbers of unlicensed teachers, not just looking at just those two things specifically. Because we, we've had a lot of twelve-forty waivers come through here and sometimes it's a little shock, shocking to realize how many teachers we have working under twelve-forty.
We can, and you would like that statewide and by district, maybe even by region, by co-op. Sometimes that gives you that, that look. So maybe not just at, and maybe that's what we need to look at, is do it by state, then maybe at the co-op region and then down to the district level. And so that kinda gives you that feel of where is that geographical shortage area really is? We could possibly, we'll just work on that.
Okay.
I echo that by district. I, I feel like when we've had districts come reapply for Act twelve-forty waivers, they can't even get us a, a finite number of how many they have employed. And, I mean, not your office, but their office tracking that. If we could get that data at that point in time by district would be very helpful as we're seeing the bigger trends of what's going on across the state.
I think the communication between, between you two would, would be awesome.
And we are working on that.
I know you are.
And I'm gonna miss her terribly. Don't make me cry back. Uh, I, we, I mean, I kinda show when the issue came up with the long-term subs, how we have just started, I mean, just like with Pulaski County this month. You know, why is there a no, a no teacher of record? I mean, we got with them, we saw that it was a flag with standards for assurance. And then we could communicate that to you and give you an explanation. So, I think we can work together and make that happen.
We will. Um, one thing I do wanna add, Dr. Moore, to your statement about the twelve-forty waiver schools not knowing how many. So one of the things that, as Dr. Sutherland and his team has dug into the data, is that in some school districts, they're very detailed about looking at their staff and entering the data in e-finance appropriately for each person and only marking the teach, the educators on twelve-forty if the twelve-forty applies in their situation. In other school districts, we've seen that schools, for whatever reason, know they have a twelve-forty waiver, so they just mark everyone twelve-forty, even though some people were licensed. So, what Dr. Sutherland and I just discussed is we'll run a report of everyone with a twelve-forty waiver for our forty-one and reach out to them and just remind them that the twelve-forty data will be coming to the state board in the future so they have a chance to get that data cleaned up. That would excite us, 'cause you know we love clean data.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on, on this issue? Thank you, Ms. Saracini. Are there any other items on the consent agenda that you would like to discuss? Okay.
Hi, good morning again. Shasta with Legal. And there's one thing on, for the caps consent items. Um, ARVA has two, had two requests on their amendment request and they actually have asked to pull their rescension of their waiver of six seventeen twenty-four oh three. They're gonna pull that off this, because they're coming back to the cap next week to request that waiver again. So, that's all there is to change there.
Okay, so, so did they have two, two waivers?
They were combined in the same request document.
Okay.
But they want to keep the one and, and change the other. And I know that's a little messy, but that's just kinda what we have to deal with.
Okay, alright. Any other changes to consent agenda?
But the other will be seen by the charter author and same panel.
So the other has already been to the panel and they were approved. They're going back to the panel next week to take care of that waiver issue.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, I have, I am ready for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Mr. Sutton to approve the consent agenda as adjusted by Ms. Wagner's comments. Seconded by Dr. Hill, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Alright, uh, we are, that's the end of our, our normal agenda. And so we are moving right on. Are you happy, Mr. Sutton?
Absolutely.
So we are to new businesses. Are there any new business to bring before the board? Okay, we're to the reports section. Uh, anyone from the board have something that you would like to share? I know that I've been seeing Dr. Moore hard at work for NASB and, and moving into her, her president-elect position, so we're very proud of you.
Well, it'll be October.
October, but you're, but you're still, I've seen some emails and things, so I, I know you're hard at work.
Yeah, I do, I mean, I, I was saying earlier, NASB is a small organization, 'cause it's only specific to state board members in other states and not every state even has a state board. But the value that I've gotten out of it is getting to know individuals in other states. And so I talk to, you know, a close friend, a Texas board member, every month and talking about the issues that they're seeing. And so I will plug, if I can help you get connected to other states or people. Um, it is, it is helpful when we're facing issues to see what other states are doing along these, these same type of issues. And it turns out, we're all in the same business, but we do it totally differently. Yeah, and so there, there's a lot to learn and a lot for us to learn and grow in that. There is, they, they do a new member training and it's virtual, so it's a little harder. But, um, like I, I found it very helpful to go to do a Zoom on the Robert's Rules of Orders and those type of things that as a board member provides some of that kind of development and they're doing those this summer. If anyone wants to get connected to that.
I'll plug too. I did it, I think I've been on for a year and I think it's up to the first two years.
Yeah.
They consider you new.
Yep.
Highly recommend. They're like three meetings over three different months.
Yep.
Um, and I thought it was very helpful.
Yeah, I, I, I'll, I'll work for that. I attended and, and mine was in person, but still, it was very helpful to, to just kinda ease you in and let you understand the operations and the expectations. So, I would echo, if you have not attended that new member training, it is, it is very valuable and would be helpful to you. Uh, um, contact Dr. Moore, I'm sure she'll get you fixed that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, Secretary Lebo?
So I got quite a few things that I'd like to go over at the, if it's a pleasure of the board during our update. And the first thing I'd like to do is introduce our new Commissioner of Higher Education to our state board. And I'd like to call Dr. Ken Warden up to the podium just to, to talk a little bit about his background, experience and some of the priorities that the Higher Education Board's gonna start taking on and maybe identify opportunities that our, our board can work a little bit more cohesively with that board to make sure we're, we're transitioning our, our students from K-12 to post-secondary opportunities seamlessly. So as a, as a scholar, I'm sure he has about a thirty-eight page dissertation brief for us, but I'm excited to hear it.
Welcome, Dr. Warden.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to be here. Um, uh, Dr. Moore mentioned, she said, "I'm not sure that we've heard from the, the, our Division of Higher Ed in one of these meetings before." So, um, it's my pleasure to be here. Uh, I'm delighted to be on the job. This is my, I guess, sixth day, working day on the job. So, um, with that said, I've got it all figured out by now, so we've got, we've got great plans. No, all kidding aside. We have a, we have a great team over there, uh, but we have some work to do. Um, and we are going to work hard to work with our, our, our Division of Secondary, Elementary Secondary Education to line the things up, align a, a better and, and make some gains in making sure that our folks that are leaving our public high schools and private high schools have good opportunities in, in higher education and that we are more seamless with that and that we're working together to align with, with everything we need to do to, to make opportunities for our students better, easily accessed and attained and that the career outcomes are there, career opportunities are there upon graduation. Um, so my name's Ken Warden. Uh, a little bit about my background. I, I cut my teeth as an automotive technician when my hair was a different color many years ago and then got into higher education by teaching automotive service technology for nine years at what's now Arkansas Tech Ozark, but was formerly a content vocational training school, Arkansas Automotive Tech. So, that's where my depth is in education, is probably in career technical education. But my breadth extends across not just two-year education, two-year schools, but I worked for University of Arkansas at Fort Smith the last nine years, serving there in the workforce education role and outreach role to business and industry, uh, serving as a dean of the Applied Science College for six years and then most recently as legislative affairs and compliance. So, I do have a broad range of, of experiences in higher education, but really, uh, the deepest part of my experience would be in career technical education. So, I'm excited to bring that to the fold and work with this group. I'm an Arkansas native, proud graduate of, of a public school there in Ozark, Arkansas. So, uh, he'll believe pride runs deep for you also, and our mascot is, he'll believe it there. So, give a shout out to my people at Ozark. I don't really have a long report today, being five, six days on the job. Uh, but what I thought I might share with you is just a little bit about remediation, if that's okay? You'd like to hear about that? Of our students who enrolled first time, full-time in our institutions of higher education in Arkansas, both two-year and four-year, which about sixty-eight percent of those were in four-year, about thirty-two where those were in two-year institutions. Of those, um, thirty-five percent required summer mediation, which means by the scales and things we use, over a third were not ready to, uh, to enroll directly into what we'd expect them to roll into upon high school graduation into their college experience. I'm gonna just go ahead and get out of the gate with some good news here. The good news is, is that ninety-six percent of those who had some remediation passed that remedial activity and got into what they needed to get into on the first attempt. So while we judge them or, we don't judge them, we rank them as they were and put them where we thought they had the best chance of succeeding in their academic venture in remedial. One, one time out of the gate, they were ready for college-ready work or they were college-ready and moved on. So they were not stifled in their academic progress or at least ninety-six percent of them were not put into this loop of trying to do remediation and get on with it. We've done a lot of work in remediation in Arkansas the last few years. Um, since I'm the new, uh, Commissioner, I'll take all the credit for that. Uh, our team has done a lot of work, especially in corequisite and co-mingling work of remedial work. So, if you're not ready for, um, um, Comp One or you're not ready for college algebra, we embed the remedial work and had, uh, uh, some really good diagnostics and work in where the deficits, the deficits are in, you know, Comp or in college algebra is typically a big gatekeeper, you know, for students. That's, math is the one that, we, where we see the most remediation. So that we embed that into the college-level work and just require some more extensive laboratory and one-on-one tutoring in those. So, many of these, of that ninety-six percent that was successful on the first remedial attempt also just moved on without a delayed semester, because we embedded more activities in that, uh, in that college-level course. So that's, we've seen some successes there. Of the thirty-five percent that took remediation, there were about two-thirds of those that had a three-point-oh GPA in their high school, okay? So, they come out of high school three-point-oh, but after, upon some, some testing and things, we still saw them as needing, not quite, not quite meeting the college-ready level. So, there's a little bit of, of concern there. But we have been working with our, our colleagues around the state, particularly with the ACC Group, Arkansas Community Colleges Group, to look at some entrance activities and exams or, or metrics that may work better than high-stakes testing. Uh, the research will tell you that if you look at GPAs rather than just high-stakes tests, so they, you know, that, that might be a better indicator of how to go ahead and place those students in college-ready courses. And so we're, we have some extensive work there.
What was that percentage again?
Which?
The percentage of students that had a three-point-oh GPA or better but needed remedial classes?
Um, of the students, which were thirty-five percent that needed remediation of, of the cohort, thirty-five percent remediation, of that thirty-five percent, two-thirds of those had a three-point GPA or higher.
Who's about sixty-five percent?
Yeah, six, sixty-five percent had a three-point-oh or higher of those who needed remediated. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, sorry for that. That co-rec model is working really, really well and I think we're going to see some gains in that across all of our institutions and try to, it's replicable. So, we've got some institutions that are really doing good work there. Uh, and some other folks who are coming along and seeing how we can best serve these students. So, you know, as I meet with you in, 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 in the future, uh, we're happy to address whatever you guys need, um, explain some of the alignment tools that we're gonna develop, uh, working with the secretary and our, our folks here in the elementary, secondary. Uh, affordability's gonna stay on the front of our mind. Degrees that are, that Arkansas needs and that have career outcomes are gonna stay on our mind. Uh, and also some, we think, just, you know, out of the gate here, I think we have some opportunities to improve some course standardization and transfers, uh, transferability, particularly in some of our technical fields. We have a course transfer system in public institutions in the state, if you take it in Arkansas, from one institution is good to the next. But there are some things we can do, particularly on the technical side, to make it a little more standard. So, those are just a few of the priorities that we're looking at out of the gate. Again, six days in, knowing everything there is to know about this job, that's where we wanna be. But, all kidding aside, um, I'm very blessed for this opportunity. I'm super humbled by it and glad to be here to serve. And, uh, we're going to make more and better opportunities for Arkansans.
So, if, if I can also add, um, thank you, Dr. Warden, for taking time of your very busy, was it third day? Fifth day?
Yeah, feels like, it, 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 yeah, it feels really short, but yeah, it's been six, but it feels like a year's worth of stuff packed in about six days.
I could tell you, uh, when, when it was announced that Dr. Warden was joining the team, it was very well-received. I heard from a lot of chancellors, a lot of university presidents, a lot of people in K-12 to say, "Wow, this, this is someone that's gonna help us make a difference." 'Cause if, if we're all doing great work, but if we're doing great work in silos, then it's not a good system that we're really creating to, to set up our students for success. So Dr. Warden's background knowledge and, and previous relationship with like Ross White, they, they've done work in their region, uh, very successful work. And maybe as we're looking for opportunities to host future state board meetings, some of the, the work in the, in the Fort Smith area with the Peak Innovation Center and, and opportunities for students to pursue advanced credentials while on high school is, is really, really phenomenal. And, uh, having that kinda brain team under our, under our purview to look at, "How can we scale this so that every student has these possibilities?" That's, I think is something that's exciting. And, and also looking at, um, making sure students that are tru, that are transitioning from K-12 with certain credentials are able to carry those credentials to post-secondary institutions depending on the school or region. Right now, that's not the case. But we have somebody that, that is, is, is ready to roll up their sleeves and work with us so that we have the right policies in place and work with their board and make sure they have the right policies and procedures in place. And I think there's a, a strong appetite statewide to get this right. But one of the things, uh, I think this board heard me talk a little bit about is, is those students need to go into the remedial or, or extra support classes and typically that's in math. And, and a lot of times you see, a lot of, lessons aren't ready to transition to college algebra. And so I know like Dr. Pride and our team, that she's heard me just keep bringing this up, that we've got to plot out a better math path for our students and our, our. up, that we've got to plot out a better math path for our students. And our, our system can't be focused on remediation. It has to be focused on acceleration. So we're, we're going to fix this. My, our vision and hope is that there will be zero need for remedial courses at the post-secondary level. But as, as we go through this, I know there's opportunities that we need to have with districts, because I start pulling data and I start looking at accelerated math opportunity. There, there's a lot of school districts that don't quite have high school opportunities, or opportunities for students while in high school or in middle school to earn high school credit. And if, if you're not taking algebra by eighth grade, you're, you're really missing an opportunity to be truly accelerated through math. So I think we can do a little bit better in that and, and look at closing that down. But then I also pulled some, some raw data and, and you hear about a third of the students that go to post-secondary institution aren't ready to go into grade-level content at the post-secondary institution. Right now, because I've been pulling data, about a third of our high school seniors don't have a full schedule. So I'm thinking there's a strong correlation where there's an opportunity to take math readiness courses instead of going home and hanging out. So we have to change the mindset. We have to change the culture. We have to change the expectation because the correlations are very significant. And it starts with creating a system that's built on, is built on acceleration and the belief that our students can do the work. So we're, we're going to make progress on this rapidly. And this is something that we're definitely prioritizing. And I want to make sure that this board and the higher ed board knows that this is definitely something we're going to act with urgency on.
Yeah.
I just wanted to thank you for that. I was that student. I graduated high school with a three-point-eight-nine, and I started in pre-algebra. And I remember, I think it was in my second or third remedial class, they're like, why are you here? And I'm like, I have test anxiety and I just couldn't get enough to get in the class for twenty years. That has always been, I had to take three unnecessary classes just to get the college credit that I needed to be able to move over. And I think this is phenomenal.
You know, if Secretary Leva would have looked at my freshman transcript yet that first semester, he probably wouldn't have hired me.
I mean, it's true. But I, I remember like an advisor looking at me, and the way she looked at me at the time made me feel like I was dumb, because like I couldn't get into college algebra, even though everything else on my transcript seemed to indicate that I should be able to. So I think this is great.
There are a lot of stories like yours in my mind, you know, that where we can do a little better job. You know, someone should have beat me over the head and, and not let me out of school at noon on, on my senior year of high school. It made me a little, you know, all, all kidding aside, what I hope to do through this is as I work, as we work and model our K-12 higher ed division alignment, I think we're setting an expectation that we're going to see that in our communities and with our colleges and with our secondary schools, doing some more framework, curriculum, things like. It's, those, those tools are there. I think if we're a little more intentional in modeling that at, at the administrative level, at the state level, that we're going to set some expectations that folks do that around the state. And I think that even that alone is just going to have some, some gains. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Please ask him lots of questions.
I won't, may not have the answers. Please throw me a softball if anyone has.
Mr. Wood?
Dr. Warden, thank you for being here. I, I look forward to hearing from you as often as we can. And I also really respect your, your background and what a unique perspective you bring to, to the job. I think it's much needed in Arkansas. I would also point out that, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the, we, we have a relationship on both ends of a student's college career, where we're handing you a bunch of students for, for their college experience, but then a small number of those you hand back to us in the form of teachers that will be in our classrooms and, 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 you know, shape the lives of the next bunch of youngsters. And so I know that there will also need to be a lot of work in that relationship also. The, I, I look forward, and I, I know you're only six days on the job, so I don't expect a, a lot of information today. But I, I look forward to hearing about recruitment of students into the teaching profession and, and interest in high-need areas of Arkansas for them to go and serve to, how, how you can work with us, how our boards can work together, whatever, to attract brilliant minds to go into high-need areas. And then also, you know, the standards that we expect teachers to, to be prepared for, and specifically science of reading, and the culture of accepting that in higher ed and preparing teachers to be ready day one to implement those, whatever.
Well, I think it was maybe day one that I received an email from colleague Sarah Senior, who's leading the teacher prep things, and that says, hey, Ken, you're, you're on our committee, so get ready. Here's our meeting. And so I've actually received more than one of those type emails. But just to your point, I don't know a lot about the details, but I do know that, that folks on our team are already involved with teacher prep and, and improving and making gains in that area. And so being part of that committee to help bring that along and working with all of our groups, I think is going to help.
Great. Well, as, as just one board member, I'm very interested in that and, and hearing what, what you see, what reforms need to be made in the, you know, in the months ahead. Because, you know, very important to me and, and a lot of people that I hear from. So appreciate your work on that.
I didn't mention earlier, but the, my, my master's degree is in ed leadership, master in ed leadership for K-12 administration. So I have a little bit of that background too. I didn't, I didn't practice in K-12, but I do have the administrative and, you know, teacher evaluation piece and things like that. So I have a, a little different lens, but I do have perspective on, on the, on the K-12 side.
I was just going to say, in, in that regard, we see too many, or hear of too many graduating teachers that have a lot of trouble with the practice exam. And I don't know where the shortfall is, but somehow I hope you focus on that or get the universities to focus more on that.
You know, I think that high-stakes tests can be a, a challenge to some folks. I think that, but it is the, it is the standard that, that we're expected to meet. So I think that, you know, you are right. There are places where we have people exiting programs who are not well-prepared to sit for and pass that exam. And I think that will probably continue to be part of the conversation with, with the committee.
Dr. Moore?
Yeah, I was going to echo. Thanks. And, and along similar lines, I was with a college student this week, and I was quizzing her on what her reading courses were at her college in a teacher prep program. I, I think we would probably as a board at some point benefit from hearing more about Carly's team and the work they're doing. I also think we'd benefit a lot from having a conversation at some point about concurrent credit and what that looks like in our high schools. And I know that's varied by district across the state, and y'all are digging into it, and your team works on it. But I don't think our board has ever dived into that issue very much. And it's, I think, something that would benefit us all to have those conversations. So I'm so excited you're here.
So just, just one quick comment on that. I think we have a lot of room to improve how we facilitate concurrent credit to benefit our kids, to benefit our state. The, the models of how people obtain concurrent credit in our state, and from where they obtain it, and how that, how that is transcribed, and how that is, how they pay for that. Even though we have some opportunities in scholarships, concurrent scholarships, it's just really all over the map. And I think some, putting some guardrails on that is not only going to help our students, but I think my, my colleagues I've talked to in higher ed are hungry for that type of, of, of support at, at the top. So that's some work I'm, I'm eager to get, get started on. Part of my prior work that, as a dean, also included a secondary technical center where we awarded concurrent credit and had direct pathways. And as Secretary Leva pointed out earlier, those things, good things happen in pockets. Replicating that and standardizing of how we do concurrent credit, I think would, would benefit all of us if we do it right.
That's exciting to hear, and in particular exciting to hear in the CTE space as well, but looking at academics and finances.
I was talking to Ross earlier about looking at our, our frameworks at K-12 and then our programmatic accreditations. They, they, it's better than I think what most people might think. But again, being intentional about that with our K-12 partners and our higher ed partners, you know, co-mingling those folks on professional development, curriculum design, putting those folks in the same room to say, when they get here, they're going to, they need to know this, and we're teaching this because our industry partner told them that. Are we all tracking? Are we using the same, you know, lens on this activity? So I could really, I could write a dissertation on that, but I'm not.
We'll get you a one-on-one.
I may have overstated my, my, my time at the lecture, but anything else?
Dr. Warden, I had one more question. Going back to your data that you were, you were talking about earlier, the, the remediation. Do you keep any data on, on their success rate as far as long-term, getting a degree, completing their certification? Those, those students that come out of high school needing remediation, do they stick with it and, and succeed in what they're aiming for?
So I, I have looked at that data. I don't, I'm not prepared to discuss it today. But I'm happy to in the future come back to you and talk about students they remediate and what their retention is compared to their cohort and their peers that were not remediated. Is that, is that kind of what you're asking?
Yeah. I was just curious, you know, if you look at the two different ones, you know, I, I almost think that the ones that had to go through remediation might do a better job of sticking with it than, than some of their other cohorts. But, you know, I, I don't know how, how that would, would play out.
I will, I will get some better data, some more, some recent things, and maybe with your blessing, get back on the agenda.
And I, and I think part of this is, the hope is that this is an ongoing update, collaboration with the board and, and Dr. Warden. So as we think of things, just send it our way. Because we, we're not going to know everything we want to ask right now, but as we leave and we're, you know, reflective, we're going to be like, oh, I wish I asked this. I wish I would ask that. So you'll, you'll have his cell phone number. Call him anytime.
Ken dot, Ken dot Warden at ADHD.edu. So Warden, Warden like a game, Warden. So yeah. Yeah, I think, Mr. Henderson, did you?
Yeah, I was just going to add, first of all, welcome.
Thank you.
We're very excited about your new role. Not to echo what the rest of the board members have said, but I will share that I'm probably one of the most excited persons in this room. I've been working in the technical component system over thirty years. And for a long time, you know, I watched this blueprint sitting in the closet gathering dust. So just your presence, just the initiative, I certainly see unbelievable value. So I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you. You know, one, one comment, and then I'll get off the stage here. I think for too long, in some folks' eyes and in our society, in our culture, we've separated technical education from higher education. Those are the same thing.
Yes.
Those are a means to an end, and it's a mistake for us to put that in our vernacular that way, that those are two different things. And even by the, just our common sense of how we discuss these things, I think it's important that we, we focus and try not to do that. Because opportunities are opportunities. Talent is talent. We align our talented kids with the opportunities that they want and that our state needs. We're going to win.
Yeah, very good.
Well said.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Dr. Warden, we appreciate you being here. And, and I, I think you have a great asset there in Mr. Henderson that you can call on. I, I think Ross has already figured that out. So, so I, I, we just fallen told him that he can, he can help you out. So, but we appreciate you being here this morning and, and updating us. And, and I know it's going to be a great partnership with the board going forward.
It's an honor. It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know it'll cut you off this month.
So I, I also wanted to see Shasta could come back up and do an update on some of the actions we've taken since last week. We're at the Earl School District Meeting, and we, we want to just give it, this board a little bit update on what we're doing with the vacancy for that board that we're getting establishment for. So.
Yes. So you all know that we decided to take applications for the one open board slot, which is in Zone Two in Earl. So what we are doing is we are accepting applications kind of similar to how we did with Pine Bluff for that zone. And tho, those applications can be sent directly to us here at the department. And we're going to accept applications until June twenty-third of 2023. And they can find that information on our website. And you can actually go to Earl's School District website, and it is actually linked directly to our website as well. So.
We look forward to seeing some good applications, I'm sure, from all.
So just other kind of highlights, if you remember last time we had our formal board meeting here, it was still during Teacher Appreciation Week. So I always want to go back and, and reflect and thank all of our teachers and leaders for closing out a wonderful school year. And I, I think just about every school that's on a traditional calendar has, has had their last day. In fact, some of the teachers I talked to this morning, I think next Monday is their last teacher work day. So while I know a lot of people think, well, school's out for the summer, there's not a lot happening in school districts. Well, this is a really busy time of the year for our superintendents and our principals. And we're, we're doing a lot of work in professional learning this summer to, to support seeing the outcomes and improvement they want to see. So we're, we're really excited to kind of end the school year on a high note. We know we still have a lot of work to do. We're rolling up our sleeves so that we can welcome our students back into a, a ready classroom here in, here in August. So been participating in a lot of professional learning opportunities, traveling to conferences throughout different co-ops, different regions throughout the state. I think we've had three town hall meetings with the governor to talk about learns and what does that mean for schools and the communities. Since the last time I was here, it looks like we're going to have another one on Monday, maybe somewhere up in the northern, northwest area. So we'll, we'll keep you up to date on, on how that's going. And I did get to participate in something that I think was a little bit special. And, you know, every, every state does, does things a little bit differently. And, and I got to give a lot of credit to Secretary Profury and, and the Department of Corrections on the work they do with some of the, the, the people that have had some major setbacks in their life, and maybe in, in a, in an institution or, or a federal prison, but that are continuing to learn, embetter themselves. And I, I want to say there's probably about a dozen or so prisons all across the state of Arkansas. And I, I got to participate and attend a graduation ceremony where they recognized and brought in inmates from facilities all over the state who had earned their GED while they were incarcerated and provided additional learning opportunities. And I want to say at that same celebration, there's probably about five or six individuals that actually earned their AA while they were in prison. And then they graduated two people with a bachelor's degree. So it was, it was really a special opportunity. And, and I got to learn a lot about the support that some of our inmates receive so that when, when they get out, they, they don't end up coming back and reducing recidivism and, and bettering ourselves and bettering ourselves for education is something that was really neat and, and exciting to learn about. So I want to congratulate Emily Howard again for the Milken Award winner. I, I always like to, to think of things in sports analogy. So as I'm watching the NBA Finals and I'm watching the hockey finals, I was like, I think we just handed out like a Super Bowl trophy for the teacher Milken educator. So thank you to the Milken Foundation for the support that they do to, to recognize excellence and, and celebrate with us. And to actually meet the Stagecoach robotics teams, how exciting. We, we always hear all the, all these conversations about this generation can't put down their phones and they don't know how to interact. But I can tell you that that's evidence that our future is bright and we're in very good hands. So congratulations to those individuals. And I got to meet Kapri for a little bit, our incoming Atoy. And I want to tell Jessica, I know it's, it's June, so don't count down the days. Make every day count. We got a lot of work for you to do between now and July before we fully pass the baton. So I want to thank you for your service on this board. And I also want to thank Deb Kaufman for the work that she's done. This is her last board meeting as, as she's retiring. And in fact, I think she told me one of the first times I met, you know, just so you know, I'm retiring. So I was like, okay, we got to come up with a plan. But she, she's been, you, I think this board knows the work that she does. But when you look at the technical nuances and accountability and federal programs and the, the years of knowledge and experience and how sophisticated that work is, she's handled it with dignity and grace and just been almost perfection. So thank you for what you do for the state and, and the years of service that you've given. So we appreciate you.
I just wanted to give her a shout out. When I started my professional career, I had a gentleman who had the office next to me, and he was very established in his career. But he came to me like my first or second day of working, and he said, hey, I'll be your dumb person, your dumb questions person. Like, if you need to know where the trashcan is, or how to load the copier, or like where the bathroom is. He's like, don't be intimidated because everybody has a first day. And he's like, and everybody needs a safe space to ask dumb questions of. And I always kept that with me. And so fast forward seven years, I get put on this board. I'm three weeks postpartum. Like, I think my first, my first meeting was on Zoom. I was like nursing a kid off of the screen. Like, it was a hot mess. We come back in person, we're all at our different tables, and I think Deb Kaufman We come back in person, we're all at our different tables, and I think Deb Kaufman could tell that I just was in over my head. And she took me aside and spent four hours with me on a Zoom call because we still really couldn't meet in person. And she was like, you know, there are no dumb questions. If you ever have a question, just ask. And she's like, if I can't answer, I'll find somebody who can. And so I just wanted to say thank you because that meant a lot to me.
Yes, we appreciate Deb, but she did the same for me. When I came in as Teacher of the Year, they had no clue what I was getting into. She took me under her wing and mentored me and helped me get on a good course, and so I appreciate her also.
Thank you, Deb, for ignoring me and taking everybody else under their wing. That's not true. One less comment before I turn it over to Jessica is another great state that I, another great initiative that I've learned that this state does is a formalized Arkansas internship program where all the state agencies run an eight-week summer internship program. And there's probably just about over fifty of them. So I got to meet with all of the interns and tell them why we're the best agency and where they should have been and talk to them about the wonderful things that are happening across the state. And I see that, I think we have three interns that are in the audience here now, so I just wanted to say hi and see if they just give a quick wave. So thank you. They're very apprehensive about that, but put them on the spot a little bit.
My granddaughter actually had part of that program, so we thank you, appreciate that.
Can I?
Sure.
I want to ask a question relative to Jacob's comments about your town hall meetings. Is there a common concern or a common subject that's being brought up about Laura and Zach when you've had these town hall meetings?
So I think that's a really good question. And when, if I was to reflect on the common types of questions we receive as we've gone through each of the town halls, each one of the town halls kind of had their own theme. And I don't think there's been any two town hall meetings that were the same. And the types of questions vary. A lot of times, a lot of the questions might be around, well, how does this impact early learning? You know, what are we doing as a state for students that aren't going straight to college or university? Or how are we creating other opportunities for students? Sometimes we get a lot of questions about special education and what does learns do to support students with special needs. I think if I say one thing that's usually very consistent is how is the state paying for this is always the question. People, you know, want to know how budgets are built and spent. But each one kind of takes its own little flavor and it's a great opportunity. So anybody even in the public, as we're coming to areas near each of the communities, encourage people to come and participate and be able to ask specific one-on-one questions. I think overall, they're very well received and productive, and we look forward to keeping engagement.
Do you have any questions on vouchers?
We do get some questions on the scholarship program and what that's gonna look like. And even on top of that, maybe homeschool, sometimes there's homeschool families and say, how does the homeschool family part? When does that go into effect? Sometimes, why does it take three years? We want it to start now? Or what does the accountability look like for people participating in those programs? So yeah, we'll get questions on that often.
Any other questions for the secretary? Okay, getting hard questions this month. Okay, we're saving it for Jessica, okay, all right. Jessica, your ATOY report.
Can you enable participant screen sharing? And can I dress shop, can I go down?
Yes.
It says sharing. You made it just in time. Wonderful, okay. I'm gonna go ahead and pre-say I will cry, and I'm not a crier, so that's very embarrassing for me, I don't like it. But this is, I have cried a few times thinking about this day. So I'm gonna start with giving my standard report and then do a quick recap of some of the big things from the year that I want to share. Last month, I was able to go with a team here from Desi to the CCSSO Conference in Chicago. And I was a part of the Systems That Elevate Excellent Teaching Group. And that was, one of the best parts about that is repeatedly throughout that, I looked at the team I was with, Stephanie Hall and Kim Mundell, and I'd say, we're already doing that, Arkansas is doing that. And it was great to hear these ideas that they spoke on of how to make education stronger in different states all across our nation, to hear that our state was already implementing some of that. So it was really, really exciting and it's fun to be able to brag on our state at a national level like that. I traveled straight from Chicago to Austin to the LBJ Museum and Library for the fifth part of the Presidential Leadership Scholars Program. I have the last one at the end of June. And obviously President Johnson is no longer living, but that's his daughter there in the hat on the right. And so we were able to meet her, we had a barbecue out at the ranch, and it was just really special and incredible moment to have, I didn't have as high of expectations because there wasn't going to be a living president, but to hear her tell stories about their life and to see his signature in the concrete next to the pool at their home was pretty incredible. And of course, to learn through his leadership and hear some of the stories, and we had these fun pictures taken and talked about his presence and the largeness of him physically and in a room was really incredible. I was able to participate in the CABT Special Programs Track and Field Day. They do their own district Special Olympic type event. And so to go see former students, to see the new Special Education Director who's there in the middle picture with me, who I'll be working with some next year, and just see, like I said, my students that are both still at the school I was at and have moved on to upper grades. My son Tucker, who was here earlier with his sister, is there putting the bunny ears on my friend. And so he asked me the day before out of the blue, I really wish that they were doing that track day and I could go help again. And it was, just happened to be the day before, I was like, I think we can get you excused for that. And so just that peer support in any situation like that is so appropriate. And it was great, it's also great for him to be able to be there and just be around some of our unique learners. This, oh goodness, this job takes a lot out of you, and I've been away from my family a lot this year, and I wouldn't change any of it, and they understand. But at my daughter's fourth grade graduation, every student had on the wall what they wanted to be. And she said when she wants to grow up, she wants to be a teacher and a mom. And there was no other child there that said they wanted to be a mom or dad. There were some great jobs, but she was the only one that put a mom. And that just like, all right, I've done something right here. Of course, the teacher part too. But that was just such a special moment. My husband saw it before I did, and then when it was up on the screen, I just thought, oh my goodness. So that was really incredible. And then one of my former students was also graduating fourth grade. And he, you may have heard me speak about him before. When he was coming to my class, I was told that he couldn't speak. He's the one who knows multiple languages, but in that graduation, he was singing the songs along with his peers. And that is just a testimony to the opportunities he's had, the access to that general education curriculum, those experiences, that he could stand with his peers and do exactly what they were doing at the same level. It was really special to be there and I was sitting very close so I could record and send to his mom and share with her. Rise and Shine, it is starting again next summer, our Summer Bridge Program to offer, to help with that summer slide and offer those learning opportunities for students over the summer. I filmed the last day of it, actually Monday of this week. My former student Lily was able to be in two episodes with me this year. We had some other students from Conway, and it's just, it's going to be a great day, a great summer of learning with these episodes. We're so excited. I think you have five or six at least Teachers of the Year, Ms. Saracini's son is in there and a few other guests on this programming. And they've also added pre-K for this summer. And so I recorded a few pre-K lessons as a former pre-K teacher, that was a lot of fun to do. So we are so excited to see those this summer. And then on Tuesday, I spoke to the Arkansas Retired Teachers Association, and that was a great group. I've seen other ATOYS mention that that was one of their most exciting experiences. And it was great to share just kind of my journey and the experiences with them and share what has been happening in our state in education and brag on the amazing teachers and districts we have across the state. So I want to go back two years ago, which is unbelievable, and kind of show you how this program started, this opportunity started. The first week of May, I was named my Buildings Teacher of the Year. And then at our end-of-year ceremony, I was named the Elementary Overall and District Teacher of the Year. So this has been a two-year experience for me, and it is incredible to think that it's come this far. So those were both surprises when those happened. And then beginning, oh, that should have been beforehand, sorry. So the Teacher of the Year Journey. Then in July, we had the notifications if we were a finalist. And I was actually visiting my husband when he was in Portugal then, and so I was just waiting. It came a little bit later than I expected, I think by two days, and I was notified I was a regional finalist. And so we were able to attend the amazing, beautiful ceremony at the Governor's Mansion where they recognized all of the regional finalists and then named the final four. And I still remember Ms. Saracini hugging me saying, special education. And it was just this like comforting moment, like yes, yes, it was just so special. And I don't think I'll ever forget that hug and that moment. My mom was able to be there, and then I was the fourth name announced for those final four. So the anxiousness of sitting there waiting was pretty incredible. And you can see my principal and superintendent who were there with me as well that day. Then the surprise ceremony in October. Again, my parents flew in from South Carolina, I had no idea they were going to be there. If you ever see the picture of me crying when I see them, it is just total ugly tears. But it was our first field trip, we were celebrating our One Book, One School Initiative, but it really was the ATOY announcement, and it was an incredible surprise. Between October and, there's my mom again, and my parents and my children. Between October and actually beginning in July, you are still part of this experience and you are learning and growing. So I was able to spend a week in Washington, we were able to be recognized at the White House. My best friend Michelle attended with me, my husband was still gone. But that was so special and so incredible, just growing with that cohort of teachers, fifty-six teachers from all over, not only our nation but our territories in the world. We filmed Rise and Shine last summer, remember, this is all before this actually started, so I was so unprepared. I remember that first day, I was like a robot stiff behind the camera, not, I had no idea what I was expected to do, but it got better. And then the State Board Meeting where Susannah passed the baton to me and I kind of got a feel of what I was stepping into was really, really special. And then July first, twenty twenty-two, walking into the department and seeing your picture on that wall and your name, that is just unbelievable. That picture was taken right after that ceremony where I was named the District Teacher of the Year just outside of our school because I needed a headshot for that application that was due in a week. And I never imagined seeing it on the wall of the Arkansas Department of Education. Got right to work, but first went to Space Camp for a week with the other State Teachers of the Year, which was an incredible way to learn how to support our students with different science and STEM opportunities and really invigorate their interest in the moon missions that are coming up. August, we kicked off the school year with the Travelers Game. We did our Teacher Appreciation Night at the Travelers Game, and I threw the first pitch, you see Capri in that picture too. And I made it pretty much down there, I think he had to reach forward a little bit, but I practiced. And then we were doing a lot of just Artemis Space Opportunities there, that's Mr. West, who's the last year's CABT Teacher of the Year. And then we had this amazing ceremony at the Governor's Mansion where we named our finalist, which Capri was one of them, and she was named as a final four. And that is just such a beautiful, special event. I know there's a lot of work that goes into that from the department here to make that happen. And it is incredible and such a special way to acknowledge these amazing educators from all across the state. We began visiting teachers before even the school year started. Ms. Torrance and I visited the finalists and got to meet them before we went for our official visit. But then that first day of school, I just couldn't stay away from school. I had to go in and see a few students and just be in a school for that first day because it's such a special time. If you'll remember, in September, I really started more traveling. I was able to go to San Antonio to speak on behalf of our military families and then speak to some different teacher leaders across our state. And then Capri was named in October in her own surprise ceremony. And so again, I don't know that we really can understand what's happening that day and going forward. I mean, I remembered Kim Mundell saying, here's my card, you're gonna need my number, here's this, here's that. And it just, you cannot even understand what the journey that you're about to begin on. But I love that picture of the former ATOYS there with Capri on her special day. And it's so nice to be able to go back and welcome a new person into the family. Courtney and I also both were able to present at the Impact and Influence Conference in New Jersey. And then this is a picture of Nicole Dave, who was one of my paraprofessionals when I taught pre-K, who is in her first year teaching her own classroom. So these visits continued, this was the National Summit on Education with Excel and Ed, Jeb Bush's organization there. We were in Utah that year. So it was a great way again to learn about education across our nation and be there as a voice for teachers and representing Arkansas. And November, we recognized our veterans here at the State Board. And it's always been such a pleasure to participate in those special recognitions and those moments. And then that was actually Veterans Day at my daughter's school where they were doing a Veterans Day Parade. December was probably one of the most special months, if you all remember. I was able to go back to the White House and see some of the students that I taught artwork displayed there on the Christmas trees in the White House. And my friend Michael that I showed earlier, he's the one when I called his mom and I said, Michael is in the White House. And she showed him the text message, and he said, of course I am. And I will, that is one of those stories that will be in my heart forever. It was just incredible. And then the Christmas tree decorated outside of the White House from our Little Rock School District. I was also able to visit the Friendship Aspire Academy there in DC where the DC Teacher of the Year was a preschool teacher. And then Senator Bozeman was kind enough to, he had a recognition for me and to take me to lunch there at the Senate Dining Hall. Again, I love December, I loved visiting with students and just really bringing joy into our schools and celebrating those special moments with them. January was the incredible opportunity to hear not only John Hattie speak, but attend the National Championship Football Game and be on the field there. You can see I'm a little bit puffy faced from crying from just the amazing experience that that was. And it seems like every month, there was another, I can't believe this is happening moment. I didn't put a picture in there of my visit to Earl, but after visiting Earl, I wanted to make a point to visit all of our schools that are receiving that Level Five support. And so visiting Helena West, Helena, Lee County, we've been to Marvel, Elaine. It was so important to me to recognize education outside of my bubble, to hear what teachers were experiencing, what their struggles were, and to also recognize the amazing work they're doing and a lot of the support they've been receiving from the state. It was imperative to me to see our state as a whole, and so I loved those experiences. This is a few visits to some of our Inclusive Practice Project Schools, meeting those teachers and those students and just celebrating the progress they are making and supporting all learners to the maximum extent possible, not just looking at least restrictive, but at most inclusive. Love Teaching Week, if we hadn't had the ice storm, I think I would have been able to visit almost every Teacher of the Year finalist, but I think I got eight of them in that month. We were able to go to Marion, we went all over, that week, we went all over the state visiting teachers and celebrating their love of teaching. I was able to film that course for Arkansas Ideas on Supporting Our Military Connected Students and then continue with the Presidential Leadership Scholars Program. And then just spending time with kids, celebrating their progress, celebrating their growth. And also, I loved this focus on reading from Lone Oak. I thought that was one of the really special, unique events I was able to attend. There with Ms. Arkansas, Ebony Mitchell, and then Craig O'Neil. And I love that these districts are emphasizing reading and putting books in our kids' hands and making that such a priority. I think that we know as a state, we have to have our kids reading, and we are doing the work to make that happen. It's a must, we have to make sure kids know how to read and that they learn to love to read. This was such a beautiful day of celebrating our future educators. And I think anytime we can celebrate people that are choosing to enter this profession, we need to do it and acknowledge them. You know, the high school students, what an awesome opportunity to meet the secretary, to meet the governor, to meet the board and see that what the work that they are doing to enter this profession is important and it's acknowledged. And so I loved that day and that the board could go down there together to celebrate them. So a few more pictures on the right, of course, from the Presidential Leader Scholars Program for George, older George Bush. And then filming our Inclusive Practices Course with the Department Special Education Teams that we can get the information into teachers' hands on how they're going to be able to better serve all students in their classrooms. A few pictures from that first month, or that first filming of Rise and Shine that we are so excited to see come out. And then a little bit about what's next. So I get to do the pleasure of doing the closing keynote at the ADE Summit. And my keynote is entitled Bless Your Heart, I could never do that. And I am super, super excited to share that. It's not something I have spoken on specifically, it'll be a new keynote for me, so I'm really excited for the opportunity to share that and then participate in a few panel discussions at the summit as well. And then next year, I've said a few times, as soon as I was named, I feel like it was at your wedding when people are like, well, when are you gonna have kids? And you're still in your wedding. And you're still in your wedding clothes?" It's like, "Well, what's next? What will you do?" And, um, because I can be very type A and a planner, I had said, "Well, I need to know by December." And that wasn't going to happen. I was imposing time limits on myself. And I remember, uh, Ms. Torrance telling me, she said, "Stop doing that." She said, "What you may do may not even be a thing yet." And that's what's happened. Um, CAVIT has created a position for an Inclusion and Collaboration Coordinator. And so I was not ready to fully step away from the classroom and from students. And so I will be working with our K6 teachers primarily, ensuring that they are able to provide inclusive practices in their classrooms for their students who receive special education services. Um, I'm already working on writing about that. Uh, special education is not a place and it's not a student and we're not sending them anywhere. We're gonna give them the services they need to be successful, just like we're going to do for all students. And learning to see that all students are general education students first, they just might need a little bit different support and services to obtain, uh, their education and what they need. But I am, it, it's a privilege to have the opportunity to kind of create, create this, uh, new vision for learning and to support what the state has been working so hard on for the last two years. Um, so again, that's, that's a picture when I was in DC in April and then my classroom last year, on the last day of school, they put the teacher who took over's name over mine, um, because they were like, "You won't come back." And at that time, I thought I could never, never just leave the classroom. But I am so excited to be able to partner with teachers, be with students, and make sure that every student has that opportunity for someone to say, "Yes, they can." Um, I just want to thank this board. I want to thank the department. I have been able to voice so much on supporting what the state is doing, what's happening in our schools because of the opportunity to sit up there with you all. Um, to learn from you all, to learn what's happening and to even say, when people say, "Well, this, this is what I heard," let me stop you and tell you what really happened because I was in the room. I was part of that discussion and I've heard what's really happening. And people then kind of step back and say, "Oh, that's not, that's not how I understood it." So to be able to be that advocate for the work this state is doing, to support teachers, to support students, and to make sure every student has that opportunity for success has been incredible. Um, I, I, I don't really want to leave. I don't really want to hand it over, um, because this, I could visit schools and just learn from these teachers that we have every single day. I, I hope that I have led and, and taught them just half what I've learned. Um, I, I had, at the Arkansas Retired Teachers Association, I made the comment that I couldn't have been prepared. And one of the teachers said, "Well, what did you learn? Like, what weren't you prepared for?" And I, we get so stuck in our buildings and in our districts, we just don't even know what's happening everywhere else. And I've been able to see that now. I've been able to be humbled by what I didn't know, but when now I can speak to. I've been encouraged by teachers who maybe don't teach at a district that's as resourced as mine, but are still changing lives. We've seen the data, we've seen the work, we see their hearts for loving students. And that just, that's hard to capture, but I've seen it firsthand. Um, I know we have work to do and I know we are going to do that work and this board is going to continue doing that work. But our teachers are gonna show up every day and we are going to change lives. And I have said, "It is, it is not just my job, it's who I am." And I love kids and our kids deserve teachers that love them and they deserve to be told, "Yes, you can. Let's do the work and do it together." So thank you, thank you for letting me be a part of this, for teaching me and including me. And I look forward to visiting or helping in any way y'all, y'all need going, going forward. Um, I'm here officially till July, but then you get me a few days at the summit as well. So thank you and thank you for including me.
Awesome. [applause] Wait, she gets back in here. Jessica, I just want to say, uh, congratulations on a year well done. Uh, you've set the bar incredibly high. I know Capri is just, is probably thinking, "Oh my goodness, what have I gotten myself into?" You know, but, uh, every, every teacher of the year puts their own, own personal touch on it and, and none of, none of us have been the, been the same. And, and, but you have done an outstanding job. Uh, on behalf of the board, we appreciate you and your input that you've been able to give us this, this past year. Uh, you, you've, um, been a teacher voice that, that we definitely need to hear. And so we appreciate that. Good job. All right, um, is there, are there any public comments? No public comments?
I have one.
You have one, okay.
So I, I know we're at the point where we're wrapping up the, the meeting, but if, if I could take a point of privilege, I would like for the members of the board to leave the dais and join me down in the front row of the seats, if that's okay?
Okay.
And everybody's giving me that look, but yeah, that's, that's an order.
Oh, okay.
Come on down.
All right.
One more to add. I got it this time.
So I, as, as someone that's still been here, uh, kind of new, but feeling like, uh, been here almost six months, almost half a year already, um, it, it's hard to believe that we're at a point where today's also, uh, it may be Jessica's last formal meeting and some of our staff's level four meeting, but we've had two board members that have given up the last seven of your, years of their lives to serve on the state board. And, um, th- this is, uh, it's a task, it's, it's a, it's a calling and it's a privilege to work with people of such revere that sit on this board. And, um, it's, it's a volunteer position and it's a thankless position and it does require a lot of hours, testament and commitment. So, um, what, I ask everybody to join down here because we want to recognize two people whose last meeting it is. And, um, Kevin and the team helped put a little video together. So first I want to recognize, um, the, the passion and dedication from Dr. Hill and, and share a quick little video before we, we do that.
And oftentimes, if you just go back and look at the problems that we, uh, endure in our country, education is always one of the focal points. And, um, there are many reasons, but education is at the, is at the crux of it. Education gives you an opportunity to refocus and to re-center. That's why today I talk about setbacks setting the stage for comebacks. Although you've had bad experiences, education allows for you to refocus that. And like I say, when people know better, they have a tendency to do better. But if you don't know what you're suffering from, how do you know to change, uh, uh, um, the direction what you're going? A, a board is meaning you're supposed to bring experience to something to help an organization move forward. Uh, uh, you know, that's been my life goal is to, to, to be a blessing to others. God has blessed Fitzhill for Fitzhill to be a blessing. I say blessings are not made to come to you, they're made to go through you.
Dr. Hill, thank you for your service on the board. You, you gotta say something. I, I think anybody that's ever had a chance to work with Dr. Hill knows that he really, really cares. And he cares about students, he cares about communities. And I'm gonna make him say something before it's, it's his last meeting, so thank you.
Well, I, it's been an honor for seven years to serve. I've learned more by my experiences of, of being on the state board and, and I, um, you know, so that's experience is what you get, we don't get what you want. And so, um, it's been an obvious learning curve for me, uh, but one that I'm better of because of. And I've learned so much from our support. But the things I probably enjoy more than anything is going out into the communities and learning from those labs of seeing things that were not so good and seeing things that were good. So, you know, things that we could hope the board will continue to charge to, to make sure every child has a chance, uh, that we give every child the opportunity to attempt to learn. Uh, and this environment doesn't keep him from, he, him or her from the opportunity to learn. But I've learned so much just by being in here and listening from, um, Ms. Newton, um, Ms. Hook, all the expertise of teachers of the year. And so I, I'm better prepared to go out to, to try to even improve education outside the doors of this boardroom. So thank you so much and good luck to you and we're praying for you.
Appreciate it, thank you. This is also, uh, our board chair's last meeting, so we have a, a little video that we're gonna show real quick, if that's okay?
Weida R. Newton, seventh through 12th grade math, Poen High School, Poen School District, representing Dawson Education Service Cooperative. Ms. Newton is widely known for her mentorship of teachers and professional development presentations concerning best teaching practices. She is also a graduate of the Arkansas Leadership Academy. Ms. Weida Newton.
One of the greatest things schools can do for students is to provide a quality teacher in every classroom. But all across Arkansas, there is a shortage of teachers in critical areas.
Wow, what a great adventure. You know, one of the things that I love most about reading is to be able to go on adventures with characters of a book. I can go to a high mountain or I can sail the blue seas, or I can go with a hero with the past or the future, just wherever the imagination of the author takes us.
So anybody that's, uh, had a chance to work with Sharon Newton, someone that's dedicated to her lives, her life, to improving learning and outcome and, and is, is a role model, a mentor, but always at the heart of teacher. And I think every single one of us has learned from you. And I, I know I've only spent some time with you on this board for a few months, but the way, uh, you lead our priorities with dignity and grace will always be remembered and we, we really appreciate everything you've done for this great state of Arkansas. So thank you. Come on, come on up. [applause] I'm gonna make you say a few things.
Well, that, that, this, this is seven years, but it's actually been eight years. And it's been eight years of my life that I've grown as an educator, as a person. And it's because of, of y'all. Y'all have been, become lifelong friends, mentors, helps. Um, I appreciate all that y'all do for education and more than that, I appreciate what you do for the students of Arkansas. As a teacher, every child that walked in my classroom became my child, m- my baby. And when I came on this board, that was how I felt about the students of Arkansas. They became my child in my responsibility. And I hope that I've lived up to that responsibility because that's my heart, is to do what's right for kids. And, and I know sometimes we don't always agree on, on what that is. And that's part of the growing process. That's part of, of, of becoming a, a better system, uh, learning what, what works and what doesn't work, uh, using Ms. Ms. Kaufman, using data to drive our decisions. And, and so, see, I learned something. So, so, you know, uh, mm, mm, uh, my charge to you a- as board members and members of the department is to always keep kids first, no matter what you do. Think about what, what is it going to be best for? Don't think of them as every, how many thousand kids there are, but think of it, that one child in that one classroom. Think of tho- those kids as, as individuals and as people. And, and I think by getting out into the districts, getting out into schools, that helps us remember what our, our focus is and, and helps us remember, you know, i- if we make our teachers better, then we make a better outcome for students. And so Secretary Leib, I appreciate all that you've done the last few months. And Board, I appreciate all that y'all've done. I wish you the best and, and, um, I'll be praying, I, I promise you, but it's gonna be from a distance. Right. So I lo- I love all of y'all and I appreciate you so much.
Thank you, Board, for indulging me. So I, I guess we have to come back up here and finish the meeting and, uh, in a formal fashion. But both of you can't change your cell phone numbers. We know how to get ahold of you.
I had seven years a- as a voting member of the board, but I did serve one year a- as Ms. Sam has served, uh, as a, a teacher of the year representative, uh, on, on the board. So, so it's been a great, great few years. And, um, if there is nothing else, I thank Mr. Sutton. You are up.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. You know, it, it's been my pleasure to be able to end these meetings during my tenure here. Um, and I certainly wish you well.
Thank you, thank you.
But being that there is no other business, I'm, we adjourned.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor? All right, we are adjourned. Thank y'all.
And I guess I'll hand this officially to, to our new chair. There we go. [laughter] We're leaving next week for, uh, National Body of the Nation. [laughter]